And good evening. Welcome to the Maryland City Council Workshop for the month of May of 2022. We'll begin with our pledge. I'll ask councilman hand to lead us in the pledge.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, councilman. Let the records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for with the exception of Mayor Portem Vigliotti, who was excused due to illness this evening. We'll begin this meeting with our review of the minutes. This is for the April 6th and April 11th regular meetings. I'll ask members of council, do you have any additions, corrections, or concerns with the minutes as presented to you this evening?
No.
All right. Hearing none, those will be up for your approval on Monday evening. Our next order of business will be a public hearing regarding the proposed Sewal annexation. Before I open that hearing, I'm going to say a couple things. First off, this public hearing is opening this evening. It will remain open until June 1st. During that time, we expect to get additional comments from both residents and state organizations as well. On June 1st, this body will reconvene, at which point we will simply close the public hearing at that time. This topic will then be presented to the council for debate and decision in July. The workshop is when we typically do our debates. Votes are taken the following Monday. I'm going to go over real quick, because of some confusion, the process of an annexation The city typically receives a request from a property owner seeking to be annexed into the city. We will meet with them and discuss terms of annexation, and then an approval of those terms would come before the council, which took place a few months ago. We will request consideration, either we or those seeking the annexation from the county and the state for their consideration. We will then conduct a public hearing. That's where we are at this point, where we get to hear from residents, as well as other organizations within the state regarding your thoughts and feelings, and then weigh that in our decision for it. And then after that, the final decision will be up to the council to make. As I said, that will take place in July. Have I missed anything in that process, Mr. Wepr?
That's a good summary.
Okay, very good. That kind of tells you how we got to where we are. I want to clear up a couple things. There's various information floating around in what is social media and newspapers and such. Couple things I want to clear up. Annexing a property does not change the ownership of the property. This is not the city purchasing someone's property. This is not the city forcing someone off of their property. It still remains in their possession. We just simply move boundary lines around it to include them in the city, typically at their request. Despite what certain county groups have said, this does not create an enclave. The maps have been approved by the county commissioners and the county attorney. There was some poor information put out there and reported on by the Carroll County Times. No, it is not an illegal enclave that has been straightened out with the county. Lastly, Tonny Town needs to be a very civil place. The harassment against the Sewals over this needs to stop immediately. I don't think I need to repeat that. I want you to share that with your friends. This is a decision for their family that they're making with the city. You have no right in the world to contact them and harass them. I hope I don't have to repeat those words again. With that being said, I do want to open the public hearing at this point. I'm going to invite the Sewals to please come up and present first. When you come up to present, these are the guidelines for public comment here. You are to state your name and your address. You will sign in on the form at the lectern. Make sure you speak into the mic when you're talking. You will be given three minutes to make your comment. At the conclusion, I will ask you to please wrap it up, and then we'll move on to the next person. When you're making comments, you are to direct them to the mayor and council, not directly to anyone else in the chambers. I don't see any, so hopefully this isn't a problem. Do not display signs or stickers or anything like that during this period. If you have something you wish to share with council in a physical format, you may hand that to the city clerk, and she'll distribute that accordingly. Please do not approach the council table. Also, it is a time for you to offer comment. It is not a question and answer. What we are doing during this moment is soaking in everything you have to say. We're going to be taking notes. We're going to be listening. Everything is recorded for us to consider. If you have questions that you would like answered, you are to be sure that the city clerk has your contact information, and then you'll be contacted by myself or staff with the appropriate answers privately. If anyone causes a disruption, I may have you removed from the chambers. Please don't put me in that position. Again, we are a civil community. I expect this to go really well tonight, okay? But with that, I'm glad you're all here. I'm glad we have an engaged community, and I'm looking forward to hearing what you all have to say. With that, Mr. Sewell, please begin.
Hi, I'm Ronald Sewell. Lori and I would like to be annexed into your wonderful town. We tried years ago. We were told to come back. Other things we've done in the process of annexation, we explored a well on our property, which will be a part of Tonny Town. It's not finished. George Easter Day, the same gentleman that put the well out, I think it's around the Baptist church, did this well, and he said he thinks it could be equally as good. It's no cost to the town, except you have to finish it. And that will be what you normally do. Hopefully, it'll be an advantage to the town if we get extra people in the town. We hope to. I've lived here for close to 40 years. I've seen progress in Tonny Town for many years. I think it's a wonderful place. It's like Main Street, USA. You have good local developments going on. You have the work you did on Main Street I hear years ago. It's inviting people in. And I want to congratulate you on the parks and rec person you have. She's a very fine person. Last year, when I was working, one day it was on a Saturday, there was a really nice function going over at the park here, and I heard Leonard Skinnerd coming right across the field, and it was fantastic. Made me feel young again. So you guys are doing wonderful things in Tonny Town. I would hope that this development would be an asset to the town. The builder that we have a contract with is NVR. They're the same company that is building out at Meads Crossing, and when I drive through there, I think those homes are spectacular. The other company, Ward Homes, is doing equally as good. I see a lot of sheriff cars parked in Tonny Town, so you're attracting local people in the work. I mean, to live, it must be an affordable place to live. I see kids out playing on waving at each other. It seems like it's just a great place. I'm very happy to be a part of it if you let me. And do you have any questions for me? I don't want to talk on that. You got more important people here.
We won't be asking any questions.
Okay.
But thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
My name's Clark Schaefer. I'm a lawyer representing the Sewals and NVR. As you all know, the Sewell property has been sort of on the table for many, many years now, and it's been carefully looked at by the town this time. This is, you know, as you all know, we're a year or so into the consideration of this. I think the key question is, is now the time? And that's obviously in your purview. Is now the time for Sewell to come in? We think it is, and here's why. I think it's important to recognize that without this being in the town, you have little or no control over this property. Now, it's owned a agriculture in the county, and everybody knows you can't do, you couldn't do a lot of houses on it without water and sewer, which is your control. But if you look at the ag uses in the county, you'll find things like slaughterhouses, contractors' equipment storage yards, and I'm not saying that'll happen, but I'm saying that if this doesn't annex, you won't have control over the development. It's not going to stay ag forever. And like I say, is now the time? I don't know. Is it ag forever? It's in the growth area. You've master planned this. You've planned it for growth. It's in the long-term water and sewer. Now, we're going to ask that that be accelerated a little bit if it comes in, so that we can do a development over the next three to seven or eight years, and that is what we're talking about. Once it's in, and you've been very strict in your annexation agreement about not making any promises, you know, in terms of, we will give you water and sewer in two years. We're going to waive our adequate facilities ordinances. When we come, when this property comes in, it will be subject to the sovereignty of the city of Tonny Town. You're sovereign in these jurisdictions. You've got, actually, you've got more power than the county commissioners, because you're really home rule. They're not. But anyway, you will be in control of this property, and you have not agreed to eliminate any of your ordinances, waive any of your ordinances. We're going to be subject to your adequate public facilities ordinances. We're going to be subject to your environmental ordinances. And so the fear that I've heard from some people is, this is too much. We can't handle it. It's, it's, well, it'll only develop if it meets the criteria that you've established in your ordinance. If you have one policeman per, you know, it'll have to meet those criteria. Secondly, or thirdly, or fourthly, it assures, at least it makes the construction at private expense of a collector road that's shown on your master plan. As you know, a collector road runs across the middle of it and is designed to connect to 140 eventually. That will be constructed at developer expense in accordance with our annexation agreement, and it'll be built to collector standard. So that's a road that while it will benefit the Sewell community, it will also benefit all the citizens, and it'll be done on private money. The density here, we're talking about a maximum, according to our annexation agreement, 340 single-family units, 80, I think it's 84, 85 semi-detached, 170 singles, with 50 to 60 acres of preserved open space, which will be in the environmental areas, clubhouse and the amenities for an age-restricted community. I think it's fair to say, I mean, I could throw out a bunch of numbers here. Everybody could guess what the market's going to bring, but everybody knows the housing market has jumped and it's continuing to jump. Now, even if it doesn't continue, it's still high. You'll get people with disposable income in these properties, and those people will spend money in your downtown. They're at the right end of town, you know, towards your town center, and they will. The road situation will be addressed as part of the review of this subdivision. Everybody knows that the connection of Harney and 140 is a problem. The angle is terrible to begin with. It's got to be a right angle. That looks like it can be fixed and will be required to be addressed as part of the traffic for this. We're looking at a five-to-eight-year project here, so it's not going to be something, assuming that water and sewer works out and we meet your APFOs and et cetera. It's not something that's just going to be dumped on the town. Finally, as you know, the waiver, the county granted the waiver. They seem satisfied that the project could work. They were inquiring about your ability to service it with water and sewer, et cetera. They were very satisfied by Jim Weprak's answers. We're looking at that in good faith. This is an opportunity to grow on this end of town, and it's the kind of development that I hope you can support. I hope you can welcome these people into your community. They will pay taxes. They will play Little League baseball. They will be contributors to the community, just like, you know, the other people that have moved in here in Creekside and other developments over the years. So we think we meet the main criteria about the master plan. Our density is pretty close to what it's master planned for, you know, with all the open space. We're not asking for any kind of huge apartment complex or anything like that. I think it's a legitimate development. It needs to go through your system, and we appreciate your consideration. I'll sign my name and get out of here.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer.
You.
Once he leaves the lectern, it's open to anyone who wishes to come up and speak to
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name's Lori Sewell, and Ronnie and Clark have already covered a lot of the issues. There's definitely going to be a lot of open space. The back of our farm is about 16 or 17 acres of woods, and it's slated to stay conservation, which will stay in woods, so that's a positive thing. Also, there's a lot of open space, even in the open ground. There's going to be a large buffer down by the stream, and there's other areas that's going to have open space. So we're just asking and hoping that Tonny Town thinks that this is going to be a very nice community. It will be very well-designed, very nice, age-targeted or age-restricted community that will give Tonny Town a big edge with the people that are coming into this community. Thank you.
Hey Lori, Lori, mention Ag Pres where you've got, you've got a minute left. Mention the Ag Pres.
Okay. I know that there's been discussion about why we're not wanting Ag Pres with our farm, and we have been on the master plan for future growth in Tonny Town for many, many years. So that makes our farm ineligible for any type of preservation program. Because we're on the master plan for future growth, we cannot go into an Ag Pres program. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sewell.
Okay.
All right. Who else wishes to come up and speak regarding the proposed annexation?
Yes, my name is Michael Smith. I live at 3411 Fringer Road, directly across from Meadow Brook, Meads Crossing. We're the only area that has preservation, and I put our property, 14 acres, into preservation when I first bought it 33 years ago. And some of you gentlemen and you miss don't remember or weren't even in this town in 1997. Well, in 1997, the people in Fringer Road demanded a study of the water that Tonny Town had. At that time, it was turned, excuse me, turned over to the state. This study on Meadow Brook and how much water it would take and how much water was in town. Evidently, this town does not realize that you cannot continue drill wells. It doesn't matter how many wells you drill. You're on the Gettysburg Aquifer. And Tom Doublebee warned the town well before this mess happened on Fringer Road. Meadow Brook opened up. They opened a new well at the pump house. They drained 14 wells on Fringer Road, and you can't imagine your pump burning up, your water heaters, or anything else. But there is no water to build anymore homes. I stood by and watched Mead Crossing being built. Should have never done it, because when you come home and you don't have a drop of water and the town had to pay for them 14 wells. And I heard Mr. Sewell say about his water on his property, well, that's fine, you can volunteer it, but you can have a 600-foot well, and if the water isn't there, it isn't there for the community to use. You don't remember when we had to take our washers, people in town had to wash their clothes, drain the wash water out of their tubs and washers into buckets and barrels to water their plants, and every yard was burned up and you couldn't use water. Everybody was on water hours. And yet you keep on developing, and the state has told this town, everyone has told this town, there is no water in the Gettysburg Aquifer anymore. When it gets low, and I can tell it's going to be a drought, because Pine Creek is not running like it normally does. It usually is much higher than that, and when Pine Creek goes dry, you go on water hours in this town. Believe me. And you've never, you don't remember. This is 1998, 1999, and they're up, and it's only been a warning once that the water was low, I think, a couple years ago. But you never experienced having to do what my father and mother-in-law had to do, drain their washers into buckets and take and water their flowers. And I don't have any problem with anybody buying, selling, or developing ground or whatever, but I just want to warn the town, when the citizens out on 140 and Harney Road, their wells go dry because they have to supply more water to a development, which should, I'm not saying it should or shouldn't be built. The thing is up to the state, and the state reported back to the city at that time to Mr. Ryan Dollar, which hid the papers from us. And then Mr. Flickinger did.
10 seconds, by the way.
And Mr. Flickinger was good enough to help put the well pipes in and everything. He was a wonderful man, and he would not want to see the town run out of water, and I don't either. I'm sorry, but I have to make this point. There is no more water for this town to use. It's gone. It's been used up.
Who else would like to come up and speak during the public hearing? Please step up the microphone.
I'm not related to the Flickinger he referred to. My interest here is not on whether there's this annexation or not. I couldn't care less about that. The only thing I care about is if the city follows the truth. The state of Maryland says this is an enclave. The city says it's not an enclave. A government agency in Carroll County says it is an enclave. Now, somebody don't know what they're talking about. I'd like to know where this piece of property is that would is referred to as an enclave. You said you don't answer questions, so you tell me later, but these people ain't going to know the answer to that if you tell me privately. Now, I think you should follow the rules. We, usually as a Republican town here in Tonny Town, we're against all this immigrant annexation. We don't mind the annexation, or mind that immigration, as long as you follow the rules. I don't mind this annexation, as long as you follow the rules. Now, if it's, if it's an enclave, you've broken your own rules. That's my only concern about this. Now, Mr. Schaefer, the attorney here, he has been an attorney for Carroll County, maybe still is, I don't know, but it was a Carroll County agency that says it is an enclave. So you got me confused. My only concern is that you follow the rules.
Thank you, sir. Who else would like to speak for the public hearing?
My name is Ann Ness. I live at 4380 Angel Road here in Tonny Town. I'm directly across from Meads Crossing. Several things. This is a rather impromptu thought as I was listening to other people talking. The one thing that struck me, first of all, was this is an age-appropriate development, so you're talking, from what I understood, it to be like an age-restricted, and yet the next words that came out of the mouth was, the kids out there playing ball and riding bikes? Contradictory there. Main Street is now the time, talking about traffic coming off of Harney Road. I sit and I think, when I hit Tonny Town at 4:30 in the afternoon, the traffic is backed up at the square, not Harney Road, the square, all the way down to Evapco, Crouss Mill Road, all the way out to Southern State, all the way out to PNC Bank, I don't come from the other way, where it's the traffic flow with Meads Crossing there and Meadow Brook and all this traffic coming in from Baltimore and everything. Nobody's moving. And then all of a sudden, you hit the back roads, the little alleys and streets coming through Tonny Town, and then you're dealing with everybody trying to fight where they can't get by because there's no organized traffic flow. So now you're going to put hundreds of more houses in and more people and more traffic. Harney Road might be fixed, but what about the rest of the city? That's another major issue. And when we had the streetscape, it would have made a lot of sense to actually look at traffic flow at the square so that people could actually move. You sit there and you watch them. People are running the red lights because they're so frustrated, because they can't make right turn, they can't make a left turn. It's a heck of a mess. Also, the other thing, there were discussions about water, and I know when they were starting to pump for Meads, my neighbor's a dairy farmer. They pumped his well dry. They had to get tractor trailers in with water so that he could actually go and he could do his dairy farming. It wasn't a slaughterhouse. It was good old-fashioned agricultural practice here in Tonny Town. My other neighbors, their well went to mud, and then even now, they're drinking bottled water. I was never even notified, my dairy farmer was. I live right across the road. Did anybody call me up or send me a letter saying, oh, we're running wells? Please watch the quality of your water. I have a water filter on my line to keep my hot water heater from burning up from all the sediment and my water, to be clear, when I drink it. You know, these are the things that are hitting people at their very basic lifestyle, and it is frustrating, because you're seeing, you can't go anywhere without fighting traffic. You're wondering about the water that's happening, and you're wondering about, you know, kids on their bike, are they going to have a nice, really good place to play? Or are they going to be, maybe, who knows, out on the road or something like that? These are just day-to-day concerns that really need to be addressed. Thank you.
Who else wishes to speak in the public hearing this evening?
Chris Tillman, 10 York Street in Tonny Town. And just to be clear, for the purposes of this evening, I am not speaking for the Tonny Town Chamber of Commerce. Ordinarily, I am very much in favor of property rights. It should not be for people to tell someone else what to do with their property. There's obviously always the public good, which must be observed, but I think that to try to tell somebody, well, they can't sell their property, especially if they can't put it in Ag Preservation, and they want to maximize the value of their property for their family, I don't think that it's quite fair for people who just want it to stay farmland, to keep it as farmland. That said, however, there are several issues that do need to be addressed as part of this, and they have been brought up here. There are issues about, you know, these folks aren't making this up about their wells, as far as I know, and that is an issue that has happened in other places and in other times. My concerns are intersection improvements and whether Harney Road is to be routed through the collector road that gentleman described and routed to a safer intersection that meets... that meets 140 in a, in a safe way and in a controlled way, hopefully in a signalized way. Also, there are concerns about school capacity. And, you know, the schools are fairly well at capacity now, so now, you know, we're looking at development with the additional development of Mead's Crossing and, and this development, you know, are, are we, from the county standpoint, equipped from a school, in a school sense? The other issue, of course, is the traffic downtown. And that's, I would think, is the primary issue. And as the gentleman said earlier, is this the right time? Well, it may not be the right time. If there is, you know, I, I know that you are pushing for the bypass to get that back on the, on the program, and it's still 10 years or more down the line. But the real question is, if you've sat in the line coming up Baltimore Street in either direction, towards the light morning or afternoon, is now the time to add another 500 cars to it? So that's, you know, like I said, I, there are things that need to be considered from a public safety and, and public policy standpoint. But we shouldn't be trying to beat this down just because we don't want to see change. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come up and speak during the public hearing? Going twice? Up front here?
Hello. Joe Bibbin, 16 Baumgartner Avenue in Tawny Town. And I just wanted to kind of talk about a couple of things from a perspective of, me and my wife, we've only been here for like four years. When we bought the house, we were very surprised to see that the lady who sold those had barrels of water coming out from the spouts. She would collect the rainwater so she could, I guess, water her garden. We don't do a lot of gardening, so it doesn't really matter to us, but I was shocked. We're coming from Baltimore County, and water was very, very cheap. So I couldn't figure it out. It was only after we got our first couple of water bills where we figured out what she was doing. She didn't want to, of course, mention it. No big deal, we love her house. But if this whole deal that I know very little about adds to the strain of the water, it shouldn't be done. If it doesn't, then I think it probably should, because more people, more tax dollars, we can expand the roads, right? We want to build up and make it nicer and everything like that. So that's really all I have to say. We got to get the water figured out, it's 2022, shouldn't be that expensive. If this helps it, maybe more people paying toward the water, maybe 500 more people paying their water bills makes ours cheaper, and we can build and fix whatever the problem is that's making it so high, maybe it's a good thing. So just wanted to put it out there, if it in any way makes the water more expensive, I'm totally not for it. If it makes it cheaper, I'm all for it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Make one more short comment.
Please approach the microphone for a short comment.
The subject of water came up a few months ago, and I remember sitting here when the Baptist church well there was an extremely good well. Now, I don't know anything about how it is now, this has been a couple of years ago. And I was also told, heard it through this chamber, that those farms up along that pipe creek there, they have an enormous amount of water, all of them, at that time. Now, I don't know how it is now.
Thank you. Final call for comments during this public hearing. Okay, we're going to move on with our agenda for the evening. As a reminder, this public comment, or this public hearing is remaining open until June 1st, at which point this council will reconvene and close the public hearing. Let everybody you know know, if they wish to submit further comments on this, please have it sent to myself or to the city clerk, and we'll be sure the council gets copies of it. We are open to hearing all comments possible. With that, we shall move on. Let me stop my timer, got away from me. Our next item of business this evening is reception of delegation. We have Brian Lubinow from CDM Smith, our city engineers, giving us a sewer compliance update. Mr. Lubinow, what do you have for us this evening?
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight to give you another update on where our team stands with regard to the wastewater compliance program that we've been tracking for the last couple of years. We were last here, I believe, four months ago, so this is an update from the previous presentation I gave. Just as a real quick summary or a background reminder, the wastewater treatment plant, the ENR upgrade, was completed in 2016 under consent agreement with MDE. And that is, under that new plant, there were new floating lowered limits for total nitrogen and total phosphorus. The plant, when the wet weather occurs, it can overwhelm the sewer system and add additional water to the, to the treatment plant. And that can lead to difficulty in the plant meeting its permitted load limits for those parameters. So the program that we developed looks at items at the plant and within the collection system to reduce those wet weather I and I flows and help better manage them at the So like I have in previous months, I'll provide updates kind of on three different levels. The first, from a planning perspective. The second, from where we are out in the collection system in reducing inflow and infiltration. And then lastly, at the plant. So first of all, on a planning level, you know, we, we meet approximately bi-monthly with the staff and, and go over and, and stay on track with our, with our plan. And then we provide these routine updates to you. We are working primarily, this is the city manager, working with the county on their triennial water and sewer master plan. That planning is underway for the next round. Every three years, that plan gets updated. We've submitted wastewater capacity management plans. The most recent was for the year 2021, that was submitted back in January. And we provide routine updates to MDE. And just keep in mind that, at this point, that we haven't started discussions, but it's possible that this could lead to a consent agreement to allow the city to effectively bring the plant back into a compliance in a manner that's in cooperation with the state. Next, out in the collection system, the staff has essentially completed their, their survey of all of the manholes. So now we have an accurate picture of where all of the terracotta pipe, that's the older pipe, that's susceptible, more susceptible to I and I. So we know where all of that is. They're in the plan, they're in the process of refining the locations of those manholes and tracking all that data on a new GIS system. So that's something that the city staff is, is in the middle of. As far as the Meadow Brook interceptor, that was identified as a, a large source of I and I. And you may have noticed the construction progress underway over the last couple of weeks up by the Crane Masters' property. That's the replacement portion of the work at the Meadow Brook interceptor. So that was roughly half of, of that interceptor is going to be replaced, and that construction should be completed next week. And I, we did get early reports from the Department of Public Works that, that that's just upstream of the York Street Pump Station, and they've already seen noticeably lower flows coming into that station just, I think I got that report last week. So at that time, only a third of the work had been done, and they were already noticing reductions. So that's something we'll definitely track in the coming months to compare previous flows to new flows. And then the rest of that interceptor would be replaced by a lining program, so it wouldn't be the dig and replace like what you see going on out there now. It would be a lining of the sewer, similar to what was done to the sewers in Baltimore Street about a dozen years ago or so. So speaking of that lining, the idea would be, we would be moving into that lining project here this summer. So right now, we're, we're in a planning phase as to what other terracotta lines in the city are good candidates for a lining to reduce that I and I into the sewer. So with that in mind, the city did televise all of the terracotta that was left in the system. So that was about 20,000 feet were televised. And the photos you see there are snapshots of that, of some of the sewers and some of the issues that were identified in the terracotta pipes. So the, the one in the upper left is just an idea of the cracking that you can see. So you can see some cracks running down the length of the pipe. So that's where, you know, you can have sewer collapses, which cause backups, can cause road collapses, major problems. Cracks like that sometimes are not eligible for lining because when you put that liner in there, it can actually encourage that pipe to collapse on itself while you're putting a liner in and cause some more significant problems. The picture on the upper right is a, is a, is a sag in the line. That's, you know, you can see a deeper section of water there. That's because the pipe is, has settled in an, in an area. And again, that, that is not a great candidate for lining because if you line it, all of the sag is still there. All you've done is just lined through that sag. The lower left is, is some, you know, holes, some cracks that are developing, holes where you can actually see some soil protruding through. You know, that, that could be eligible for lining. And then the lower right photo is an offset joint. Those terracotta pipes are short sections of pipe with many joints, and it's not uncommon for those pipes to become sort of out of alignment with each other. So that's what you see. So again, that's something that, if, if the offset is severe, may need to be dug up and fixed prior to a lining program. So we looked at all that, and, and based on the, the, the level of deficiencies that we saw in the sewer, and based on the feedback from the televising company, we broke the sewer segments into essentially three categories. The first one is ones that were eligible for lining, that we could just go in and, and, and run that new liner in, cure it in place, and it becomes a, a new pipe that's, has no I and I. Others where we had to do some point repairs first, so dig up a certain section, repair that, and then line it through. And then finally, segments that were in such condition that really lining wasn't an option, and we had to just replace it, similar to what is being done right now up at, at the Meadow Brook Interceptor. So all told, including all project costs for those, all, all the segments that, that need to be rehabilitated to eliminate all of the terracotta in your system, we came up with a, a approximate concept cost of $3.6 million. At the request of the staff, then, we looked at breaking the areas up into geographical areas where we might develop projects that could be implemented to, you know, have smaller bites at that $3.6 million and also be consistent with the capital improvement plan that I know is on the agenda for later in the, the meeting. So we've, what you see there on the screen is, is those seven or eight areas that we've broken out as potential projects where you could go after this in a phased approach. The highlighting in the map itself refers to the type of repair that would be needed. So those, those lines that you can see, I realize it's small, but that are in blue highlighting in the map, those would be the ones that we could just go in pretty simply and just line the sewer without doing dig and replace. On the other extreme, the ones that are in the pinkish highlight, those are ones that are, the condition is bad enough that we're recommending that the line be replaced completely. And then in the upper right corner, you'll see the, the cost breakdown of those different areas. And I'll just highlight, the ones in yellow there are the ones that are currently in the 2023 CIP year program. And that includes the portion of the Meadow Brook interceptor that isn't currently being replaced. And then the ones in blue there are in the CIP part of the 2024 program.
Can I ask you a couple of questions real quick?
Of course.
Have we identified all of the terracotta pipe in the city at this point?
Yes. So through the manhole inspections, we identified all the locations, yes.
Okay.
And all of it was televised.
Perfect. Do we know the age of the youngest terracotta pipe?
That's a good question.
When did we last put terracotta pipe in our ground?
That's a good question. The oldest, and this isn't answering your question, but the oldest portions of the city, I think, are from the early 50s, I believe.
Right.
Just looking at the map here, I don't know when that area, and maybe there's some people in the room, the Fairground Avenue area, I don't know when that was, was developed, if that was, I'm not sure. But I, I, when I'm looking at this, you know, it's Cloverberry, the Cloverberry area, like whenever those were built, I would, I would guess that was, those were the last terracotta sections that were put in. So whenever those were developed.
Okay. So we're still talking 40 years plus was the last time?
Yeah, I would think it would be the 60s. That's kind of a guess, but, you know.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
That's all. Continue.
Okay. And then lastly, our progress to date at the plant itself. This first item really isn't directly related to plant compliance, but one of the chemicals that's used at the plant for total nitrogen removal is a product called MicroC. It's a, it's a carbon product to promote biological nitrogen removal. The plant currently has a tote system, so they get the, the chemical in in small totes. We're in the middle, well, I should say, towards the end of a project to build a new bulk storage tank for that chemical, so the city can get delivery of that chemical in a much more efficient manner, pay a lot less per gallon with a tanker truck. And then we have a, a new tank on site that we can store it. So that'll allow the city to continue to use this chemical to drive down nitrogen in the effluent, but do so in a more cost-effective manner so that, that those funds can be used in other, in other ways to benefit, benefit the system. Two more items that I can just give you quick updates on, the resiliency evaluation. So the idea there is to identify maintenance and spare parts requirements so that we can, that the staff can be more prepared to handle upsets, or if a piece of equipment goes down, they have the spare parts on hand that they need. There have been some instances in the last three or four years where a part has gone, has failed, which happens, and the city has had to wait an extended period of time for, you know, parts to come in and get the repair done. And that's caused them to have trouble meeting the permit. So it's a study to just look at what makes sense to have on hand and, and what maintenance needs to be done so that we're taking care of the equipment that's out there. And that's, that work is slated to start this summer. And then, again, not really directly related to plant compliance, but the, you've, you've been hearing me talk about the sludge de-watering upgrade. Parts for the new building have been delivered, and construction, active construction really hasn't started, but it will be this summer as we wait for permits and we wait for a delivery of the actual belt filter press that's going to win that new building. So finally, the next steps, this, the sewer system rehab, planning that, and then subsequent design and bidding of those individual components and how we piece and phase that project, that's really the next big effort here. Moving ahead with the construction of that de-watering upgrade, the evaluation of the redundancy component that I discussed. And then lastly, I haven't talked about this, but the, on, on the phosphorus front, so there's two permit, there's two nutrients that we look at that were, that we've historically occasionally had struggle meeting, and that's nitrogen and phosphorus. occasionally had struggle meeting, and that's nitrogen and phosphorus. Quagalin is how we capture the phosphorus. And so again, it's another chemical. And the, the city has traditionally used ferric chloride. So there's some testing that's proposed that we would look at other chemicals, perhaps different doses to find a point where we can more efficiently remove that chemical and, and again, drive down that phosphorus to meet permit and to control those nutrients getting into the Chesapeake Bay. So that was all I had, but I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
All right. Members of council, do you have any questions for Mr. Lubinow? It's been a very positive update. I appreciate you coming back and sharing that with us. May not be a question for you, might be a question for Mr. Weprick, because we talked about the Meadowbrook Interceptor work. What is the percentage of completion at this point on that project? I feel like it's pretty early in it, but...
So the active construction that you see going on out there, as of the end of April, we were, it was 60% complete. So it's probably 70 or 75 now. I think they plan to be done on next Wednesday, a week from today.
Okay. Very good. How long do you believe until you have a good grasp on the new flow levels to that pumping station?
Right.
I assume you want to see a trend at some point?
Yeah, and it's always, it's always difficult to, when you're talking about, because there's so many variables. You know, there's the, the rainfall is kind of the easiest variable, but there's also just the level of groundwater. It's hard, you know, we don't exactly know. It sort of tracks with the rainfall, but not perfectly. So yeah, I think after six months or so, we'd have a good feel. But yeah, I mean, definitely after a full year where you can compare seasonal variations, that's when you really see it. But I was, I was very encouraged to hear that note from the Department of Public Works last week that, kind of unprompted, I believe, some of the staff came to the, Mr. Smeeck and said, oh, yeah, flows are down. Like, I don't even think it was, they necessarily connected it, but...
Right.
So yeah, good news.
So something to watch when rainy days come. Hopefully you don't see another 12 inches of rain in 18 hours like we did last year.
Right.
But very good. I'm glad to hear that. I know we were, we were gauging our expectations on that project, so was all the others that we have planned.
Yes.
Very good. Last chance for members of council, questions, concerns, highlights, lowlights. Everyone seems happy. I'm happy. Thank you, Mr. Lubinow, for making the trip down here.
Thank you again.
Safe travels back. Just gonna pause for a couple of minutes while he gets himself gathered and makes his Your escort is waiting outside, as you can hear. All right, we are moving right along. Next, I'm gonna ask members of the council if they have any conflicts regarding anything on the agenda this evening.
No, sir.
Okay. We'll go to our second public comment portion of the evening. If you would like to comment on anything that is not listed on a piece of paper in front of you being our agenda, you are welcome to make those comments at this time. Same rules apply as before. I hope I don't need to say them again. Just simply come up to the lectern, state your name and address, write your name and address, and we'll be glad to hear what you have to say. Would anyone like to comment on any non-agenda items? All right. I think we're all talked out from before. Moving on to our resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Up for introduction, we have Resolution 2022-06, our capital improvement program. I'm going to throw this over to City Manager, Mr. Weprick, to kind of give us any summaries at this point.
Okay. The draft that you saw last month has been updated a bit. We've modified some of the cost estimates based on what Mr. Lubinow just shared with us and the results of the cleaning and televising work that was done on the sewer side. We also, pursuant to last week's discussion, did add some money in for property acquisition related to Antrim Boulevard. Had a discussion with the city treasurer on amounts to put in there and keeping in mind our debt policy and so on. And we opted at this point as kind of a placeholder to put $500,000 in every other year as something that could be fiscally managed. So that's another change that's in there. We also included, we updated the Department of Public Works' proposed new shop building that would be out on Stumptown Road. And we also added in the water and sewer projects to serve that property. So some changes to the plan since you saw the draft last month. The draft is gonna be, it is available on the website. If folks want to take a look at it, they can click on the, go to the city website, www.tonnytown.org, click on View Documents, and then scroll down to Capital Improvement Program, and it will be out there for folks to review. So with that, the resolution basically is just the language to adopt it. It will go before the Planning Commission at their May meeting, so hopefully they will come back with a recommendation to adopt, for you to adopt the capital plan. So we potentially could do that next month.
Questions from the council or comments? As you see, some of the additions being made to it. Did we add anything in for Creamery Building at all?
We did not.
Do we want to? We should? I agree that we should. Do we want to? And I know it's, it kind of comes down to what, well, that's the question, is what do we want to do? And then how much money do?
Why do we need to spend money?
Well, we need to do something because that building either needs to be renovated or torn down. We need to decide which it is, and we don't have to decide that tonight. I think we need to kind of push ourselves by allotting some money to it and forcing ourselves into a decision because we have been, how many years now, talking this thing to death? If we could remove a brick every time we talked about it, it'd be gone by now.
Mr. Mayor, is there a way that we can vaguely reference it in the CIP without deciding tonight what we're gonna do with it? I mean, just so that it's there?
Well, of course. I mean, we can, we can say, because remember, the CIP can be amended at any point.
Right.
We can sit here and say, we want to throw $100,000 at resolving the Creamery Building. That's not saying right now, we're going to say, we're gonna tear down the Creamery Building, that we're gonna turn it into a new Taj Mahal. But we need to earmark something and push ourselves to finally make a decision on this thing.
Yeah, I agree.
Thoughts and opinions from the rest of council? You can also tell me what you want to do with the building.
My thoughts are to earmark some money to, for demolition of that building.
I agree with you. I would like to propose that we put $100,000 in FY 2025 for now. For, I'm not gonna say demolition of, because we haven't officially decided. For, yes, resolving the Creamery Building. Yes, that's correct. So we can, we can talk about that Monday evening. We put this to, well, this is a vote to introduce, but we can amend it at that point if you wish to do so, that way we can vote on it officially?
Well, it is in draft form currently. We can certainly make that change before it goes to, you know, to the Planning Commission.
To the Planning Commission, right. Mr. Weprick, under which?
There was one, one other addition I forgot to mention in my little summary there. We also added a project to create additional downtown parking. In reviewing some of our other documents, including the city's Sustainable Communities Plan, that was one of our, one of our measurable outcomes was to provide more convenient and visible parking for the downtown area. So I know we talked a little bit about that last month, but in going back reviewing other plans that we've adopted, that's something that, that we've told the state we were pursuing in our Sustainable Communities Plan. So we did add a project in there.
I mean, it'd be great if there was a building we could tear down and put a parking lot in place of it in the downtown area.
Wouldn't that be amazing?
That would be phenomenal if we had that ability.
We'll have to think about that.
Sorry. Mr. Weprick, under which, which department do you wish to put Creamery Building? It doesn't really fit under any of these at this point.
No, it really doesn't. I think we'll put it under City Hall.
City Hall. We're gonna put the Creamery Building under City Hall.
Is there a SISAFISI in category? No.
Yep. First municipality to adopt that category, though.
Any other discussion we wish to have here on the proposed CIP that is up for introduction? So going back to parking lot, soon as I find it again. So we have one there to create additional public parking lot within the main street area, but we don't have specific locations, plans, anything else. It's earmarked, right? Just kind of?
Correct. We've, we've had some discussions with, with the property owner.
Okay.
Nothing definite at this point.
Very good. And as far as you're concerned, the numbers on here are, in general, not just that, but in general, are fairly accurate at this point, barring any other...
We've been tweaking them as we've gone along, you know, as I said, most recently with Mr. Lubinow's estimates on the sewer side. Many of these are, for the utility things, are based on projects that have moved farther along in the engineering process. We, we derived a lot of the costs from the engineering estimates for the Robert Smith Road Project as far as a price per linear foot for water, for storm drains, and for sewer. But then, when we did more work on some of the sewer projects, as was in Mr. Lubinow's presentation, you know, we found that certain lines, we can line portions, do point repairs on portions rather than a complete replacement. So those numbers got massaged a little bit from just that standard, you know, price per linear foot that we were using previously. Other projects, like the parking lot, for example, we based it on the cost, the recent memorial park, parking lot expense. But in this case, we probably will also incur, we may incur demolition cost and grading in addition to, you know, just the, that parking lot was a reconstruction, so it did have the full base of the pavement and everything. But this will probably include some additional site work and probably stormwater management, though it will be a smaller lot.
Okay. Next question. Should we consider, and is it common to take into effect inflationary pricing as we go out into FY 28? I say that during a time of intense inflation right now. And what costs us $250,000 next year may cost us $350,000 in five years.
We certainly could put a multiplier in there.
Okay. Is that, do you feel that's appropriate? Or is that a talk we should have with our treasurer to?
I can certainly discuss that with, with Barry. I would, I would hesitate to use the current environment to use that projection because we are at a...
At unprecedented times, right.
Right now, so.
Right.
But something like a, you know, a...
A 5%?
We can certainly go back and look at what the Consumer Price Index, you know, has done, much as we did when we considered the water tank rehabs.
Right.
You know, we can go back, I can revisit that and come with, come up with a factor based on that.
Right. I mean, I don't expect to scout the crystal ball and figure out what it's gonna be. I just, what I don't want to do is in 10 years, whoever's up here at that time says, man, I wish they would have allocated more because money's worth less now. Okay. If we can look at that, that would be awesome, in my opinion. Any other input from council? That'll be up for introduction on Monday evening. Up for adoption Monday evening will be Resolution 2022-05. That is our monthly water allocations for the month of May. Mayor Portem Vigladi is not here to check the math for us. I'm sure he's sitting at home checking it as we speak. Are there any questions, comments, concerns from the council on our water allocations for the month? All right. Hearing nothing further, I'm gonna go back to our City Manager, Mr. Weprick, for his report. What do you have for us this evening, sir?
Okay, so we already kind of talked through the capital improvement program. As far as the ARP aspect of that, we did submit our first compliance report on April 20th, so we got it. Barry was very relieved to get that in. Signing in is apparently a bit of a chore. And there are one-time passcodes that you have to use, and you got a block of them. And she has had trouble where she's had to use two or three passcodes before she's able to get in. And, but it's submitted, so, and each time, I'm sure it will get a little bit smoother. Let's see. We already have focused a bit on the sewer annexation. I don't really need to spend a lot more time on that. Brian updated you on the Meadowbrook Interceptor, so what's left is the Robert Smith Road Broad Street Reconstruction Project. We did have a, the city staff and CDM Smith held an informational meeting Thursday evening, last Thursday, at the American Legion. We had 22 folks turn out, which is not a bad turnout considering we only sent out about 32 letters. So we, you know, had, had good response to it. It was a very productive meeting. Generally, folks were appreciative that we took the time to explain the project to them. Brian did an excellent job presenting the project and fielding general questions about how this type of work typically proceeds. Public Works Director, Smeeck, and Assistant Director, Myers, were there as well, and they were able to respond to some more specific questions about the city system or site-specific concerns. We had some folks, one, one gentleman showed up with a video on his cell phone showing us how badly the stormwater sheets across the street and into his yard. And so it was a very productive meeting. So we had some orthography. Brian printed out a, gosh, probably a, an eight-foot-long plan with, you know, aerial view with some of the work superimposed over it so everybody could go up and, you know, walk along the table, find their property, or talk about, well, at this corner, you know, the water comes down here and it turns the corner and comes into my driveway and things like that. So folks were really happy to have some input and find out what was going on. So I think we will probably schedule another meeting like that a little further on, once the, once, once the engineering is a little bit farther completed. So very glad that we took time to do that one. So lastly, not one of the usual categories, but we've had some conversations with a couple of property owners who have asked to be removed from our growth area. One of them, we've talked about here before, maybe not with all the current members, but, and that one is the, the Syrian property on Stone Cypher Road. There's, there's not a street address for it because there's not, it's an unimproved property. It's all ag. This is property that, a portion of which was put into the growth area at the former owner's request in our 2010 comprehensive plan. And the property has changed hands now, and the current owner would like to go into ag preservation. A portion of the property lies within the planned right-of-way for Antrim Boulevard. So a couple of years ago, we had discussions about pursuing acquisition of that four-acre piece of the property to preserve the right-of-way. And shortly after that, the property owner decided that they would rather play the long game and stay in the growth area for eventual annexation. That has shifted again, so they're pursuing ag preservation at the moment, but this time around, they're pursuing... But this time around, they're pursuing, I believe, a county easement rather than a MALF, Maryland Agricultural Land Preservation Fund easement. So with that, the county is a little more flexible on what they will entertain for the ag easements. So a potential plan would be, we pursue acquisition of the four acres. If council is on board with the idea, we then can, once we acquire the right-of-way or the four acres, we can send a letter to the county ag preservation folks advising that we do not object to the property being preserved, and it's our current intent to remove it from the growth area with our next plan update. So that's an option, but the property owner is starting to push a little bit more on making a move towards ag preservation and has, I guess, a prospective buyer lined up. So we're getting a little bit more pressure. The city attorney's been working with the attorney representing the property owner and realtor there, so there may be a little more coming from there. The other property is at 3410 Fringer Road, and this one is Stapleton Property. And Mr. Stapleton approached the city several years ago. Actually, it was when Mr. Hind was the city manager, when he first came to inquire about potential disposition of the property. He was interested in perhaps if the city would, was interested in acquiring it to develop a new park. There was talk of development of the property, talk of ag preservation, and it's kind of bounced around a little bit. Mr. Stapleton has a tenant farming the property now who would like to purchase the property and continue to farm. But of course, it is in our growth area. So similar situation to the Syrian property. And again, with the flexibility of the Carroll County Ag Preservation Easements, we may have a similar option as we discussed with the Syrian property. So this one's a little bit interesting because this property is the first farm on Fringer Road on the left if you're turning onto Fringer from Route 194. The next property up, the Kirby property, is a 69-acre piece that while it's in the growth area and the... Generally, the county will notify us of subdivisions and things like that within a mile of the property. They did a minor subdivision, and we were notified of that. But they also put the remainder of the property into a tree bank. So that property is not going to develop as the intended R20,000 residential development. And with that effectively being removed from the potential for growth, the Stapleton property is less of a key property because if we were to take the Stapleton property out, then it would be hard to have the next property be contiguous to the city. But with that property being kind of off the table now for annexation, the Stapleton property that's about 30 acres, a little under that, I think, becomes less of a key property for us.
Less of an appeal, right?
So those are a couple of things that I'd like to have a little feedback on. You know, please ponder that. Maybe we can discuss it a little bit on Monday evening, just to set some direction. Mr. Stapleton has been very, very patient, good to work with. He's not, you know, threatening to do, you know, anything spiteful or anything like that, but he has pointed out that, you know, he is getting to a point where he needs to make a move on the property. And, you know, he would like to see it stay, he would like to see the folks who are renting from him be able to purchase the farm and continue to farm it. But if that's not a possibility, he does have the option of doing a tree bank on the property as well, which actually sounds like it would be a little bit more profitable for him. But he really has advised that he would prefer to let the folks farming it continue to farm it. So I'd like to kind of get your thoughts on that on Monday night, and, you know, we can continue those discussions with him, but I'd like a little direction, so.
Okay. Do we have any, let's start with, do we have discussion on that topic tonight? Or do we want to chew that over a little bit before Monday and discuss it then?
I'd like to chew that over a little bit.
Chew it over? Okay. Same with the Syrian property as well, I assume? Okay. Do we want to add to the agenda for Monday evening each of those topics? So under new business, we would have consideration of acquisition of 4.4 acres, however you want to put it, for the Syrians. And then also, well, I guess along with that, removal from growth area, the remainder, and then also the Stapleton property removal from growth area. And we'll expect to discuss that Monday evening and perhaps have a decision for you, unless on the legal report, we hear something else. Anything else from Mr. Weprick on this?
One last thing.
Yes.
The Gettle proposal that we talked about last month, I need to clarify something, and that is that in the memo I wrote, I made mention that we would be able to get rid of Verizon lines with a savings of about $900 a month. That is part of the program, but it's not going to be immediate. So I had a conference call with the representative from Gettle and the water superintendent because we were under the impression and that that would be a more immediate thing. So what needs to happen, fortunately, this isn't a huge piece, but the proposal does include equipment that is going to go in basically all of the wellhouses, but it's not going to be installed in wells nine, 14, 15, 16, and 17 immediately as part of this proposal. So until it's installed in those wellhouses, we won't be able to get rid of the Verizon lines. The cost to do those additional five wells is $13,715. And that can be done a well or two at a time, just out of the materials and supplies budget for Public Works. We don't have it right now. We might be able to do a couple by the end of this year. But the director doesn't want to risk spending that right now in case something breaks between now and July. But hopefully, we will have some money to do two of the wells this year and then the other three in July. So I did want to point out that that savings is not going to be right away. We talked about possibly delaying signing the proposal and bringing it back to you, but then when we followed up with Southern Corrosion and Gettle and talked about the lead times for everything, the conclusion was, we couldn't wait, that we wanted to get this going so that they could order the equipment and have it in place in time for Southern Corrosion to drain the tank. So I just wanted to point that out so that if you're looking at the accounts payable in the next month or so, and you see that there doesn't seem to be any change with Verizon, even though this, you know, this should be installed by June, but you're not going to see that savings until after July. So I apologize for the miscommunication there. And we are working to make sure we don't have another one of those, especially not in a memo that I write to you. And that's it for me.
Any questions on that? Councilman Hand?
Going back to the Syrian and Stapleton property. So besides the blurb on the bottom of our page 12 and then referencing the growth plan that is, you know, a part of Tony Town, is there a more succinct way that I could go about getting kind of a visual? I'm just a visual kind of guy. Or should I just piece it together that way?
The city's comprehensive plan map is on the website. So that's probably the best one to take a look at. It'll show these parcels, the Stapleton property, actually all. The Stapleton property, the Syrian property, and the Kirby property that I mentioned that's now a tree bank are all shown in yellow in the growth area. They were all designated to be medium-density residential. And that's probably the best map to take a look at, but...
Thank you.
Yeah. If you have any difficulties, give me a call, and we can figure something out.
To go along with that conversation Monday, we'll have graphics that we can put up on the screens. That way, everyone can see and enjoy the pretty colors of our maps.
Awesome.
Okay. So I think an important part of that is to show
Sure.
the Antrim Boulevard and where it cuts through the part of that property and why we feel we need that to make our Antrim Boulevard happen, because it's going to happen. Okay. Any other questions for city manager on his report or the departmental reports? All right. With that, Mr. Gallow, do you have a legal report for us this evening?
Yes, I'd like to talk tonight, Mayor and council, about the Syrian property. You've already heard about the money side and the growth side. I'd like to give you the mechanics of how we'd like to try to go about doing this. There's a lot of moving parts. So back in 2019, the council at the time already authorized us to extend an option. And so what I mean by that is, normally, when you want to buy a piece of property, you go out and you negotiate an amount, and you sign a contract, and it's done. But that's not going to work for them, not going to work for us, because we may want it. Yes, we want it for the bypass, but we really only want it if we can actually use it. And what I say by using it, it's going to be a four-acre, what, lot in the middle of nowhere that you can't get to? That's not usable. In fact, you can't record a deed that has no access to it. So in order to make it happen practically, we need to join that, I'll use the word lot, but it's not a lot, we just are joining that piece of property to the adjacent property. And the adjacent property is owned by the county because they already bought that piece to start the acquisition of the right-of-way. So if you can imagine, we're just like laying another domino next to it. So the county has to agree to do that. They can't agree to do that until we have the rights to buy it. So the option agreement. We basically have a contract with the property owner that says, we want the option to purchase this piece of property for this much money. It's a per-acre price, and we have so many years or months to exercise that option. And they agree to it, and we agree to it, and then they can't back out. We don't have to do it if we can't make it all work out. But if we do make it work out, then we just say, we're exercising our options, kind of like you do with stock, and then the contract happens and it goes from there. So we talked about this in 2019 and came up with an option agreement already. And there was no interest back then. Now there's interest, so we got the old agreement out and said, hey, we have it done already. Here you go. And it's with their attorney right now. So that's kind of how the mechanics would go. There is an option, and we talked with the county, and Commissioner Wance has said he'd be helpful in working out the deal with that land for the county, because it might not be attached to the county land. Maybe the county might give us that land and it'd be attached to our land now. Again, all those mechanics to get worked out. So that's in, has to be in play, and they seem to want to do that soon. And that is another moving part along with the growth issue. So we cannot make a contractual deal with them to say, if you do this, then we'll remove the growth issue. So we got to do them both kind of at the same time.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Yes.
All right. I figured since we have technology, let's use it. If you look on the screens, all those pretty lines, my mouse over here towards the right is on Antrim Boulevard, which was built as the first part of the bypass. If you can imagine that road continuing, 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 this right here is what the county owns. Is that correct? This is the northern part of the Syrian property that we're talking about. So our discussion is 4.4 acres. It just kind of cuts this little top off this hourglass-shaped property right here. Okay? So the idea is that this property would be appended to the county property that's right here. So that's kind of where we're talking. Is everyone clear on where we are in the city on this map? Awesome, awesome.
Good. So now you get that little top hat smokestack section would be what we would want. We don't need anything else. It is not impossible for us to get that if the county doesn't cooperate. But to get it, we'd have to go through the subdivision process in the county and have a right-of-way from the road down there where you see the road, all the way to that section, which is just really hard to do. I mean, it's just, it makes it more impossible for the property owner. So it's not an impossibility, but the county seems receptive. And our thought to you all is, if we can't work a deal where the county would give us the county land, we should still do this and just make the county land bigger and something like that. So ultimately, we don't really need much more authority unless you want to not do this, because we already had the orders that we can do it back in 2019. What we will need from you at some point in time before we can execute the option is a budget amendment or authorization for more money, because the money you authorized back then was like exploratory money. And we're not talking about huge sums of money. We were talking, you know, $10,000 an acre, four acres, $44,000, you know, something like that. But we don't have that authorization from you yet. So it's going to come back to you when it's time to execute the option, if that makes sense. So that is the most tangible way for us to connect to Antrim further along the alignment, and we want to jump on that while it's hot. Questions for me? More than you wanted to know, but that's why we're doing that kind of dance. The Stapleton property has nothing to do with that. That's on the other side.
Different issue.
Growth issue is the same, but nothing about any other facilities. Okay. That's all I have for you tonight, then.
That's all you have? So what's interesting is, as Mr. Weprick and I discuss Antrim Boulevard from time to time, you kind of see pieces of it starting to come together. As you look at Mountain Brook Farms, the intent, it would go through that development, which means when they do that development, they have to build that last part of the bypass. And then you start looking at, you know, what the county owns, what we're looking to append on to that. You're just seeing more and more of it kind of coming together from each side. So the future is coming. But there's a good possibility of all this happening, so work with us. Any other questions for Mr. Gallow on his legal report? All right. We have nothing for old business. We'll move into our new business. Monthly financial report. Any questions from the council on that as presented to you this evening? All right. Everything must be clear, then. Accounts payables, I asked the same. Any questions, concerns? Any of this keep you up at night? All right. Both of those will be up for your approval on Monday evening. Next, we are looking for legal assistance on code violations. Who wants to start? Mr. Gallow? When it says legal assistance, that...
I have openings for you all if you'd like to come help me do these things. No, that is not what that means. We've had the informal policy as long as I've been here that the staff, the management does not initiate lawsuits on any matters without you all authorizing the lawsuit because of the consequence where you might find out, I can't believe we sued Joe over his house and we didn't know anything about it. So we've always had the policy that you all need to authorize that, not necessarily from a budget standpoint, but sort of from a budget standpoint, because you realize that when we talk about code enforcement, and that's what the realm we're talking about here, is that these are not revenue-producing items. And we've kind of gotten over that for the couple of years. There was a time where we said, well, we'll go fine all these people that have terrible properties, and then we'll have the money to pay the lawyers to go after them. Well, the reality of how this all usually works at the end is you go out, issue violations, and when the people don't comply, you take them to court, and then the judge was the one that cuts the baby in half and says, hey, if you comply, I'll waive the fines. So we don't really ever get any money, okay? It's kind of like having a police department. We don't really get any money from police enforcement. The benefit we get is that we have law and order in the town. So this is kind of civil law and order, if you will. So we have had habitual problems with certain properties in town that are egregious if you're their neighbor. And they go cyclically, but it's the same property, the same property owner, it's the same letters, it's the same threats. We could tell you the addresses, we're not going to do that here in public, but we could tell you the addresses, and you'd be like, oh, yeah, I remember that. And so what we want to try to do is get an authorization that we can pursue these. And it's almost like a blanket authorization, that if there are these types of issues, we can pursue them, and then Jim can figure out how we'll pay for... we can pursue them, and then Jim can figure out how we'll pay for it or how we'll do it because we can't take everybody on at once. That's the thing. So that's the legal side. Management side?
I don't want to.
One of these properties, some of you may recall, we refer to it internally as the Cat Pea House. That's been a problem for several years. We've sent the owner, you know, multiple notices, and while when we have received a response, it's indicated that they will, you know, make improvements that never actually happens. So here it is going on, well, it's been several years, and the neighbors are not getting any happier with the situation. So this one is when, I will back up a little bit. When I was the code enforcement officer, we would on occasion abate a violation. We would do very basic things like, you know, mow tall grass. You know, chances are, nobody's going to sue us because they mowed, we mowed their lawn. They might not ever pay us, but ultimately, when the property changes hands, we collect at that point if we haven't collected beforehand. Something like this, we're not going to do without a court order because this is probably going to be going inside someone's house, like Servpro kind of stuff, you know, ripping out sheet rock and power washing concrete floor, and it's going to be a big, I can't imagine it's not going to be a big undertaking. So we want the insulation, you know, of that court order, you know, to protect us from any liability. And also, as you might expect, it's kind of hard to get a contractor to go in on somebody's property without their express permission and do work. So it's very hard to find people, you know, contractors, because we have to deal with somebody who's licensed and insured, you know, has workers' comp and all that. And it's hard, you know, folks don't really want to take the risk of going on somebody else's property without their permission. So it really is a challenge to do these abatements. But the court order, you know, if we do, if it does get to that point, you know, will insulate us from liability and also, you know, now our contractor is following a court order and not just, well, Jim said it's okay. So...
It's going to have to be Judge Jim says it's okay. Right. So on that topic, I believe most everyone, except with the exception of Councilman Hand, I don't think you're quite familiar with this property. We'll give you the address. You can walk by it and experience it yourself. This has been a habitual problem in the city, and the neighbors regularly smell what's coming out of that house. At one point, I believe the door was partially open and a neighbor went to close it and actually took pictures of what was in the house. This problem needs to be solved now, and our only way to do it is through the legal system. I think Monday evening, we need to make a decision, hopefully the right one, to authorize Jay to take this through the legal process and get it resolved finally because it's not right to the neighbors. And these houses are very close together there. It's not just immediate neighbors. It's when the wind blows, it's entire neighborhoods that are affected by this. It's unacceptable.
I'll email you the addresses so that you can get it. That way, it's, we're not kind of disclosing to the public right now what the story is. So I know you like to think of these things, so let me, I don't want to sound cynical or cold. Okay? This has, the last time we discussed this in depth had to be at least six or seven years ago in a work session when that was a conference room back there. And we have tried everything on our side. Okay? So this isn't when, if you tell me, hey, have you gone and go knocked on the door? I'm going to say, why don't you go try? Because we've done that. We've written, we've knocked on the doors. The last time we brought it up and people thought, well, maybe there's something we can do, and somebody was going to offer to go to the Humane Society and get them involved. It's all been tried.
Right.
So this is the final resort, which is why you never really hear us come to you and ask about doing this to people because we don't like it. It's not how we live in the community, but when people do not comply, what else do you do? So if you can come up with a bright idea that we haven't tried, love to take it, but we're really at, we're at the end. You either do nothing and just tell everybody, we're just not doing it, or we have to do something, and the cost is always possible to recoup. Okay? I mean, it's not, you shouldn't be thinking of the cost in mind, but how could you not? If you had to renovate an entire townhouse, it's going to get into big money. We would put a lien against the property, which we would have a part of that. So no matter what, we would get it when the property changes hands, and that's what he was mentioning. But the court could also order that we get paid, and the individuals, we could have their salaries garnished. I mean, there's other ways that we can be paid, but you have to go into this as there's no expectation of money. It's about doing the right thing.
It's about relief for the neighbors who've had to deal with this for many years despite our best efforts. So we're kind of at the end of a rope.
And the other property that we're concerned about is another recurring violation situation. And for this one, the city attorney did get involved several years ago, and ultimately, the property was cleaned up at that point simply with the threat of legal action. And unfortunately, it has gradually slid back to not the same condition it was, but it's heading there. So we would like to kind of up our game a little bit on this one and try to push it back the other way again. So, and...
Okay.
With regard to that, I mean, I feel like if I tell you everything now, you don't have to worry about it later. When it's those, there's a big difference. The first case we talked about is inside somebody's house. We can't even go in without a search warrant, administrative search warrant. Second case, different. It's outside. Anything outside that's in the public view that we can access from the street becomes a lot more, we have a lot more authority to do things. You're not going in and tearing things out. You're more like cleaning things off or taking things away, that type of issue. On those issues, we always try to go to the property owner first and say, hey, this is a problem. You need to pick it up. Okay? They don't deal with it. Hey, this is your second warning. This is a problem. They don't deal with it. Then they get the lawyer. I come in to them and I say, hey, you heard these people. It's a problem. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to have an abatement agreement, a schedule that you're going to follow. Because they don't say they're not going to pick it up. They say they're going to pick it up, and they don't do it. And then they say, well, you know, there's all this trash. How can I possibly pick it up in two weeks? It's going to take me forever because I have a bad back or whatever. So we come up with a written agreement between us saying, tell us how long it will take. What is your schedule for abatement? And if you fail to follow this agreement, then the city is going to come in and take all this stuff, and you're contractually agreeing to this right here. So they do their own thing if they don't follow through. We now no longer have to worry about going to court for this because they breached the contract and we can self-help. They have to agree to the contract upfront. If they don't, we would have needed to go to court right then. So it's a different tool, but that's easier to deal with because people can help. We've tried all these things, and if we come to you, we're telling you, they don't work.
Okay. Any questions on those topics this evening? We wish to add these to the agenda Monday evening for a decision.
Yes.
Just a quick question. So Jake, can you go into a little more detail? And maybe I already know the answer to this, but as to why? Because you want a blanket authorization for not only this case, but any cases that come up? Or is it just this one?
I think we just, there's two. And what we have always said is we would like to have a more aggressive code enforcement program. We would like to build that where it happens automatically. Most cities do that. The city council never gets involved. It just happens. But I think it's probably too aggressive for us to try to take on the world. So we always have said if we can have two major cases get resolved, it gives us experience and it lets the community know they mean business. So I don't really want the blanket authorization at this point. I think that if we talk about these two cases, and we'll get you the addresses and we'll name them so that you can refer to them when you discuss. If you do that, we see how that goes, and then we start working on how can we do something more? Because everybody lies around town and says, this should be picked up. Why isn't the town doing something about it? We do, up to a point.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. We are, we are a small city of 7,000 residents. We can deal with a lot of these things as human to human. I mean, I don't want to say everyone's in everyone's business, but for the most part, everyone knows who everyone is. So when we go out and discuss with people, we can do it as humans to a point until they just simply won't adhere, won't, won't do what is asked of them. And these are not crazy asking's we're having of these people. This is very simple things that comes down to health and safety of themselves as well as their neighbors and the community as a whole. So, very good. That'll be up Monday evening for further discussion and decision. Last, under new business, we have approval of the mowing bid. We have a memo from our Parks and Rec director. Put out RFP. Ten contractors received the RFP. Three came to the pre-bid meeting. Only one submitted a bid, and she is recommending that we award that bid to Eckers Lawn Service. Any comments, questions, thoughts and opinions? I believe Eckers has done this work for us now for at least five years. Many years, right? As you can see, there was possible interest, but only one, one came through with a bid. Any questions?
As this work goes and in our geographic region and as rates, I mean, I don't have any metric by which to gauge...
Well, and that's, that's kind of why we rely on the memo from Parks and Rec. It's kind of in line with, with their budgeting and what they've seen. Generally, they contact references and go through that.
Okay.
So that's where we kind of rely on their recommendations.
Okay.
Okay? Very good. That will be up for approval Monday evening. Finally, we have our last public comment period for the evening. If you would like to comment from the public on anything that was on the agenda this evening, now is your opportunity to do so. Same rules apply. No batteries included, no overnight camping.
Good evening. Barbara Cook, Carol Vista. Where is the piece of property you were just discussing? When you open the door, it smells bad.
We will not answer that.
Pardon?
I'm not going to answer that question. That's...
Will someone call me up and tell me where it is? I think if it's what I think it is, I suggested I'd eliminate it about five years ago. If it isn't, I'd like to, I'm curious, where is it? You don't have to tell me in public. Somebody could call me up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment on agenda items this evening? All right. Hearing nothing additional. That brings us to the end of our agenda.
Before we finish?
Stand by.
I just want to mention, because it's this Saturday and we're not going to be here Monday, the fishing derby is Saturday from eight to 10 at the...
Robert's Mill Park.
Thank you. Yeah, I was trying to get in so fast. Just, just a reminder, that's all.
If you have kids, bring them to fish. If you don't have kids and like fish, come measure fish for kids.
There you go.
One fish, two fish. All right. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. A second, please.
There you go.
All right. Motion from Councilman Haynes, second from Councilwoman Foster, all in favor of adjourning. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Thank you all.